All right. This is the Monday, July 19th, 2021, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see we have a full house. Before we begin, I kindly ask that you silence your phones and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Okay. In the absence of an immediate secretary, Mr. Lauterbach, would you please take role?
I will. President McFarland?
Here.
Vice President Roush. Treasurer Lauterbach is here. Member Baker?
Here.
Member Blasey?
Here.
Member Hatfield?
Here.
Mr. President, we have five present, one absent, and one vacancy.
Okay. We've got an exciting agenda tonight, so here we go. We are up with the consent agenda. These are items. 2.1 is approval of the minutes from June 21, 2021, the regular meeting. 2.2 is a list of staff members that have announced their resignation. Item 2.3 is the adoption of the Midland School Code articles, 105, 105(c), the school choice articles. Those are outlined in the agenda. Item 2.4 is the June financials are not available, will not be available until the August Board of Education meeting. Item 2.5 is a approval requested to authorize legal payments to the Truyn Law Firm in the amount of $465.50. And I will accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to accept the, approve the consent agenda, items 2.1 through 2.5.
Support.
Motion by John Hatfield, support by John Lauterbach. Any discussion regarding the consent agenda?
Hey, Scott.
Yes.
In the minutes of our last meeting, there's a handful of different updates that are slated for this meeting. One was a Health Department request. One was, we were waiting to get some more updates from Governor Whitmer, as well as an update from administration. So I just, that will appear probably later in Mr. Jaster's presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. That brings us to item 3.1. This is an action item, and this is going to be done by me. So after, after a thorough review of 10 applications and completing interviews of four candidates, the selection committee comprised of the remaining officers of the Board of Education unanimously recommend the appointment of Patrick Frazee to fill the seat vacated by Pam Singer. And with that said, I will move this board to appoint Patrick Frazee to the position of trustee, Midland Public Schools Board of Education.
Support.
Okay. Motion by McFarland, support by Lauterbach. Any discussion regarding the appointment of Mr. Frazee?
I'll just say that as one of the officers who participated in the process, I thought we had 10 absolutely outstanding candidates. It's very gratifying to see so many talented members of our community who really want to serve the school district. It was a very difficult decision that we had to narrow the field down. I think Patrick is an outstanding recommendation. As many of you know, he's, he's served on the board previously. He's ready to hit the ground running with, you know, minimal uptake time. So I think he's just an excellent appointee and join Scott in recommending him unequivocally.
Thank you, John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. The motion carries. Mr. Frazee, I believe you're with us tonight. Come on up. At this point, Pat, I'm going to read you the oath of office, and we're going to get you seated down there next to Mr. Shero. So if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
I do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Midland Public Schools.
Duties of the office of the Board of Education of Midland Public Schools.
Midland County, Michigan.
Midland County, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome, Pat. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That brings us to the appointment of our new board secretary. At this time, I would move that this board appoint John Hatfield to fill the vacancy of Secretary of the Board of Education.
Support.
Motion by McFarland, support by Lauterbach. Any additional appointments by way of motion for board secretary? Any further discussion regarding the appointment of Mr. Hatfield as board secretary? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Hatfield, thank you for filling that role. We appreciate it. Okay. Next up, we have item 3.4. This is an action item. This is a tax resolution for 2021 and 2022. Mr. Bruton?
Thank you, President McFarland. I appreciate that. At the June Board of Education meeting, we saw the exact same numbers that are presented at the board packet for you this evening. We moved in June to approve those rates for the City of Midland, as the City of Midland collects those rates in two tiers, over the summer and over the winter. What you are doing this evening is passing a similar resolution, but this is for the other taxing entities that only do one tax collection. So this is for the county and other taxing jurisdictions. So a very quick review of those rates that we talked about thoroughly back in June. Tonight, this authorization will allow us to levy 18 mils on non-homestead properties, the hold harmless rate of 1.7213 mils, a commercial personal property rate of 7.7213 mils, and finally, 2.95 mils on our building and site bonds passed in 2015. Your affirmation this evening will allow us to send this resolution and an official document called the L-4029 over to our taxing entities, and they appreciate our timely action on this, as it allows them to prepare their tax rolls for the upcoming collection season.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bruton. At this time, I will accept the motion, and then we're going to do a roll call vote on that motion.
I move approval of 3.4, the tax resolution for 2021, 22.
Support. Motion by Lynn, support by John Lauterbach. Any further discussion regarding item 3.4? Okay. Mr. Hatfield, can you please take a roll call vote?
All right. For the roll call, President McFarland?
Yes.
Vice President Roush?
President?
Treasurer Lauterbach? Yes. Secretary Hatfield?
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member Blasey?
Yes.
Member Frazee?
Yes.
The roll has been taken.
Okay. And it looks like the motion carries unanimously. Okay. Item 3.5, this is another action item. This is a bond ratification resolution. Mr. Bruton?
Yeah, thank you. As we talked about at a previous board meeting, we went out to seek a refunding of our 2015 building and site bonds, those that were callable. At the time, our financial advisors had predicted for us that if we had hit the market right, we could realize about $2 million in savings. As luck would have it, we did just a little bit better than what we had previously anticipated, and the bonds sold at a true interest cost of approximately 1.96% with a net present value savings now projected at about 3.5 million. So about 1.5 million in additional savings over what our initial projections were. And so your authorization of the ratification resolution will finalize that sale and allow us to sign the official documents to begin the closing process on that bond ratification.
Wonderful move. Thank you. I will accept the motion for item 3.5.
It's a move.
Motion by Lauterbach?
Support.
Support by Mr. Hatfield. Any further discussion regarding item 3.5?
Brian, roughly, what would be the net? We have a lot of expenses in that three and a half million. Not holding you to anything, something rough of what the net would be out of the three and a half million, what we'd actually be able to realize? Because we do have quite a few expenses.
Right. I have a very large document here that I can forward on to you. To pick that exact number out right now, I'm probably going to point at the wrong one, and I don't want to do that. So happy to send that along to you.
All right. Thank you.
And that could be wrong, too, but I believe the 3.5 has the cost already removed. But let's do a double check on that, but I think that is the true savings after the cost.
Okay.
Of it, so.
That's an accurate statement, Mr. Shero. It's right around 3495 is the actual savings, which has the costs already in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And make sure everyone understands it's a savings to the taxpayers. That's 3.49 that they do not have to pay in taxes to pay off the bond.
Excellent. Any further discussion regarding item 3.5? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, we have information only, item 3.6. This is the 2021, 2022 school year safety protocols. Mr. Jaster?
Thanks, Mr. McFarland. Appreciate the opportunity to give this update tonight. I would just point out that, you know, at the bottom of that first slide, it's dated July 2021, and so this is as of the most recent information that we can get our hands on. Subject, subject to change, of course, if we are forced to be flexible and move and pivot throughout the year, which has sort of been the name of the game for this past year. I would also point out that it was about one year ago that the return to school safety plan we brought to the board required action. It was in the governor's return to learn plan for the year. It was an executive order, required a board vote tonight. This is just informational, does not require a board vote. So with that, just jump right in, and we'll try to get through this fairly quickly, and if there are questions, certainly at the end, we'll answer what we can. So the first item here just refers to guiding principles. This is actually a carryover from last year's presentation. Our mission, our goals hasn't, hasn't changed. You know, the delivery of instruction by staff and students, or for, for students here at Midland Public Schools, we continue to aim to keep all of our students safe when they're in the building. We, of course, are worried about staff safety as well, and then if we have volunteers or parents who are occasionally coming in and out of the building, we're thinking about them. We want to maximize opportunities for the kids when they're in session, and we certainly hope to keep kids in school. And so we want to increase the likelihood that they will complete the semester and then eventually the full school year. And then in the end, all of this is for the sake of growth, academic growth, and opportunities for the kids. This next slide, the first sentence is really the most important piece here. We do intend to return to daily face-to-face instruction, DK through 12. Certainly, if there are unique situations, we are going to work with families to figure out what needs to be done to support their students, but this is the goal. MPS is going to continue to layer our safety protocols to ensure that face-to-face instruction can continue. At this time, we also know, well, we, we really learned this in the spring, the Midland County Health Department, who is ultimately in charge of quarantining of students near the end of the school year, gave us guidance that quarantining was not going to continue at the last few weeks of school. And so going forward, we expect that same position, at least based on the case numbers with COVID as they are now, and I know there's still talk of different variants, things like that, but generally in Michigan, case numbers are quite good. And so we don't expect to have to do any quarantining of students. We certainly will still do close contacts and notify people if their children were exposed at school, and that is really the guidance we've received to this point. COVID-positive students and staff, however, the self-isolation, the 10-day period, minimum of 10 days, and at least 24 hours symptom-free is still the standard that we're going to use or follow in our buildings. So when you look at this slide here, you can see that we really have sort of a multi-pronged approach. We wanted to really encourage those who could get vaccinated to do so. We know that personal hygiene and enhanced cleaning, self-care are going to be critical, and then certainly the importance of self-screening prior to coming to school, and this is for students, staff, any of those essential volunteers, still going to be very important. So if you break this down, you can see that for, you know, for each of these groups, we know that there are students who aren't able to get the vaccine yet, but we certainly know there are many that, that were able to and chose to do so, and a vast majority of our staff chose to be vaccinated as well. So we're going to just continue to encourage that for those who are able. We're going to encourage them to receive it when they can. Again, mention the personal hygiene, frequent hand washing breaks. Definitely at the elementary school, our teachers are working with students to teach them what those good hygiene habits look like. They're definitely going to take them to wash or sanitize hands before they go eat. Just those basic, common sense practices that we would do, really with our own kids as we are taking them out to eat, places like that. As we've talked about before, last year, we spent a great deal of money on, on investment in safety items, and so the, the bottom of the slide here references that if we can't get all the kids into the restroom to wash, they're going to use hand sanitizer. We, of course, have lots of hand sanitizer still on hand. We have still the access to the sprayers, the backpack sprayers, the disinfectant, the masks, all the safety equipment that we've used, we still continue to have in surplus and will be using all of that this year as we go through the fall. And of course, just common sense practices. Again, these are lessons really for the younger kids. I know parents often reinforce these anyways, but wash your hands before you eat, try not to touch your face, your mouth or your eyes if you haven't washed your hands, those simple things. This, this is a key piece of it, self-screening. We know that we have had a requirement for employees to do login for self-screening during the past school year. This year, we're asking that all stakeholders do this on their own voluntarily. There's not a requirement to do so. But again, this is one of those common sense approaches that if you're not feeling well, if you have a fever, if you have any of the COVID symptoms, and of course, they're all listed there, shortness of breath, cough, sore throat, loss of taste, smell, muscle aches, those, those things that would typically be associated with COVID, we certainly would like those people to stay home and consult with their physicians for guidance on what the next best steps would be for them. We don't, we don't want to play doctor, but we know that if there are sick individuals in the buildings, we're certainly going to see some illness spread during the school year. So again, self-screening, and this is where cooperation from parents and students is essential for all of us as well. Next one here, just as I mentioned a second ago, we're still going to continue to use the safety equipment that was purchased last year. Enhanced cleaning and sanitizing is certainly going to be in place for this school year. Also, it's worth mentioning that, you know, there was a significant investment in air scrubbers, is I know what we often talked about here at the board meetings, but really just improved ventilation in the buildings, air scrubbers. It does disinfect the air, can kill viruses and bacteria in the air, those units, and so those are in place in the majority of buildings, certainly in place in areas where we have large concentrations of kids, cafeterias, areas like that. One of the things I know that, that students really didn't care for, and that we don't feel that there's a need to continue this, was the, the morning lineup for temperature scanning. And we also found, in all transparency, that some of these devices, when they were positioned too close to the entrances and exits, especially when weather cooled off, we, we certainly questioned the accuracy of some of those devices. So we still have these on hand, and we can use them if, if need be, move them to more of an interior location if we eventually would have to use them again. But this practice is not going to be recommended to be in place at the start of the school And I think this is probably the one that will be the most talked about, so we, we certainly would recommend for those who are not vaccinated, a mask, but that's not going to be a requirement. It's going to be a personal family decision, a personal family choice, whether the kids are going to wear the masks at school. So this, and this is true for all stakeholders. Again, it's for employees, students, essential volunteers. But again, when you think about the age level of all the students in the district, certainly the younger students, and I know we continue to hear the research tells us that they're the least likely to become very ill, but certainly they're, they're the ones who would be susceptible to an exposure from, you know, an unvaccinated or an ill person. So we, we definitely wanted to consider what that might look like, and at this point, again, with the numbers as they are and the guidance, we hear that these recommendations continue to come out and change. Just today, for example, I know the American Pediatrics Association recommended kids two and up, recommended two and up unvaccinated should wear them, but as we've stated here, we want to leave that decision to the families. And of course, as I stated at the beginning of this presentation, the disclaimer is always that if case numbers change, or if Health Department or executive order forces us to change, you know, we would have to be flexible and pivot for those to comply with those changes. Per CDC order, the only requirement that we can't work around is that third bullet, public transportation. And this original order was from January 2021. It was updated again in April, but this requirement remained. Public transportation, when folks are forced to be in close proximity to one another, there's no social distancing, masks are required, and school buses actually do fall under public transportation. So we will have to continue to work with our transportation department to make sure that we do have some masks on hand, because if kids don't have to wear them during the day, if it's a choice, if it's a recommendation, we're certainly going to have some kids who will choose not to wear them at school, but then they'll have to put one on to go home on the bus. And so that will definitely fall on the bus driver to make sure they have what they need if, if kids come to the bus without a mask. Next one. This was not a very popular item either, and I know that for some, they felt that this additional protection was worthwhile, for others, they thought unnecessary and probably not that helpful. But again, for those students who don't feel comfortable without them, we're going to have desk shields available. They can just request those from their teachers, and so a mask can be worn. They can still have a desk shield if they prefer it, but again, these are personal choices, and families can work with their student to decide what they may or may not be requesting when they get back to school in the fall. Next here are just some random miscellaneous items. Again, I touched on hand sanitizing stations were installed in classrooms, and they are near entrances and exits, cafeterias. We have water bottle, bottle filling stations, excuse me, in every building to allow for personal water bottles to be refilled and avoid some of the additional touch points. Air scrubbers are installed, as I mentioned. Building cafeterias, DK through 12, are all going to be open for meal service. The one thing that is still recommended for the younger students, again, because of their status and not being able to be vaccinated, is that they should still stay in cohorts or class groups, so that if there is an incident or an exposure or an outbreak, that at least it's confined to a small group and not spread to the entire, you know, cafeteria where they're potentially mixing with larger groups. Again, some common sense items here with cohorting at that age level and social distancing in classrooms to the extent that we can. Quarantine rooms still will, will be in place in all buildings. If we do have a student that becomes ill during the day, we are going to ask that they go to the, these isolation rooms essentially where they can still be observed and monitored, and then have parents come in when they're able to pick those students up. And then last year, we really did reduce the number of folks who were coming in and out of our doors. By the end of the year, we had freed up so more volunteers could get in the building, and frankly, at that point, most of them who were asking to be volunteers were disclosing their vaccine status with us. It wasn't a requirement, but that was certainly how we did it. We did limit those to essential volunteers only, though. So for example, we might have had volunteers come in and, you know, do Backpack Buddies on Friday. We, we certainly tried to avoid situations where any volunteer might come in and be around a large group of students. That was the goal. The last slide here, again, a few other miscellaneous items. Athletics, at this point, I just spoke to both of our high school athletic directors today, and they continue to hear nothing from MHSAA. Last spring, I think you'll remember that we were required to do weekly testing for athletes, and that was part of an agreement that I think MHSAA had struck with the governor's office to allow spring sports to continue. At this point, there is no testing required. Again, the issue with transportation would apply here as well, so if we send a football team, for example, you know, to Bay City or Saginaw, while they're on that bus, they would, they would have to follow the public transportation requirement with a mask. Clubs, extracurricular organizations are all going to be functional, again, operational. I know we've been in contact with our band directors at both high schools. They intend to run a nearly normal band camp, and I say nearly normal simply because they still are aware that if the bad weather forces them inside a rain day, for example, they're not going to put 200 members of the band all in the band room. They're going to split them up, you know, have different sections in different classrooms. Again, just some of the common sense things that we learned over the last year that can help to minimize risk and exposures. Currently, no capacity or gathering limits anywhere that we see, and obviously, if MHSAA comes out with something, we would, we would have to follow that, because our school is a member of the Saginaw Valley League, which is a member of MHSAA, but nothing at this point. And we're going to continue to encourage, once school starts, PE and band and others that can be outside, when the weather is good, to be outside. Just makes sense to do that. And then, of course, when bad weather forces us in, just again, follow those protocols of cohorting, social distancing where we can. The last thing to note, really, as it relates to specific buildings, is that I am meeting with all of the elementary principals tomorrow, and this is going to be one of the topics to touch on these main points here. And in my mind, I'm still going to ask them to consider what their protocols are going to look like for each school, given that they have unique configurations, unique spaces, different gym sizes, different cafeterias, and how they're going to work to follow the recommendation for cohorting of, you know, during lunches and those types of things. At this point, again, this is what we know as of July, and our hope is that everyone's going to stay safe and healthy, and we're going to be able to maintain in-person learning for the entire school year. So with that, I'm happy to entertain questions. If Mr. Shero had anything else to add, feel free to certainly jump in, but that's just what we know as of today.
I've got a question, Jeff.
Yeah.
If we end up in a situation where students have to be quarantined for whatever reason, are we in a better position to provide remote learning based on investments we've made?
I would say we learned a bunch last year, and obviously, they're, just the pivoting quickly is, is the difficult part, so I would still say they're, it wouldn't be seamless in every case, but I think the teachers are much more prepared for it than they were a year ago, of course.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep. And again, though, quarantining at this point is not required, but if that comes back in, yes, certainly.
Okay.
So our intent, if you recall, with the pivot cameras, is to fully have them participate in the regular classroom. We started off, obviously, last year doing homework while they were out, and as time gone, we tried a couple of the pivot cameras. We learned some legislation, some rules about could we allow students from the outside to access the classroom under FERPA and some other regulations, and so all that's been clarified. And so we are, we will be in a better position to do it. It still can't replace, I don't think, being in the classroom, but.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah. And the other thing I'd add to Jeff's presentation is I sent you the Health Department, it's from the north, recommendations, if you recall, a week ago. Our Health Department typically follows that, so we have not gotten guidance from our Health Department yet, and there has been really no clear guidance yet out of the governor's office or the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. You've heard CDC and you heard American Pediatrics, but we have not received that from the state. So the best I can tell from all our organizations is mute means it's what we're operating under the summer. No mask, best protocols you can, no mandates. We all know there's some concern about the variant and the 12 and under group, and so we'll have to watch that very closely and see what they require going forward. They'll, they'll respond before we will respond. You know that's what's going to occur, so.
When do the new swivel cameras arrive? Swivel, is that what they're called?
Yeah.
Pivot, whatever.
Yeah. Dave's behind the TV over here, so we'll get you that answer, John, so.
Do we expect to have it before the school? Do we expect to have it before the school year starts?
I think so.
Okay.
Swivel cameras, Dave?
Pardon?
Swivel cameras arrival?
They're here.
They're here.
Great.
Thank you.
So tablets.
Excellent.
Brad, did Mike's comments address your, you have some initial questions in the consent agenda?
Yes, I had a couple other items that I just wanted to clarify, and you guys can tell me if I am correct or incorrect. It was in a packet of supporting documents. In terms of the cohorting, I know lots of parents had questions about this. So cohorting people who are fully vaccinated and people who are not fully vaccinated will not be cohearted into separate groups. That is not recommended by CDC. It's a school's responsibility to ensure that cohorting is done in an equitable manner that does not perpetuate academic, racial, or other tracking as described in the U.S. Department of Education COVID-19 Handbook, Volume One. So when we do cohorting, we will not be.
Yeah. So our cohorting is keeping them separate when they eat together. So classroom, first grade classroom sits with first grade classroom. When they go to the playground, they try to mix with the same group all day. So when if we were forced to go back and do contact tracing, it's easier to do, and we can be accurate and and do so. If you were at the playground, then you've got all first grade classes commingling. There is no, the better question, the better definition may be no commingling, Brad. As much little commingling between classrooms as we can, still at the elementary. The high school, it's, we're going to commingle. The middle school, we're going to commingle. The unvaccinated elementary.
It's the DK through five grade level where that's mostly recommended. And to Mike's point, by class, by, in some cases, by grade, depending on the way the lunches are set up at each school.
And if they're in the classroom and they can assign four children in this pod and four children in that pod, and then we get a positive case, it's easier to determine who was exposed.
Okay. But my point was, I agree with all that's.
We agree with what you read.
That we're not separating those four and four by a vaccination or a non-vaccination.
Correct.
They are just groups of children.
Yep.
The other question I had is, they keep handing out the or sending out these COVID handbooks. This is the June 2021. Is there another one that's going to be coming before school starts? Do you think this is it?
If I had to estimate, I think there will be something. So that's why I sent you what was the northern counties to the north of us, because what I've known is she, Dr. Morris seems to be on the first one out the gate, and then others modeled behind that. So that's the best information I have. There's pretty much silence out of Lansing right now on everything.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
With the other superintendents in the area, are they similar?
All of Clark, Ladwin, and Midland, because we meet a lot together, are on the exact same plan right now. I can't speak for Bay or Saginaw. We don't meet with them quite as often.
Okay.
Good?
Yep.
All right. Okay. Any other comments before we move on? All right. That brings us to number four. We are requested to address the board. And as many of you have heard me say this before, the board is not here to actively engage in dialogue with you, but we are here to listen. And if you do have a question that needs to be answered by the board, we will get you a written response as soon as we're able to do so. So that said, please keep in mind the five-minute timer. There are a good number of you wanting to address the board tonight. So the timing is important so everybody has a chance to speak. So first up, Jason Johoski. The floor is yours, sir. Thank you for coming tonight.
To stay to that time, I'm going to read my remarks so I can stay on topic and things. So, good evening. My name is Jason Johoski. I come to address you tonight as a proud teacher and coach of the Midland Public Schools. I've been watching the board meetings the past few months, and I felt it necessary to address you and the entire district tonight. Thank you. Yes, my message tonight is, thank you. The end of the 2019, 2020, and the entire 2020, 2021 school year were none like we have been through before. There is so much that can be said, and I may not do this as eloquently as it should be done, but it's time that someone has come up here and said, thank you publicly. To the teachers, counselors, and special service specialists, thank you. Thank you for being flexible, patient, taking the time to learn new technology, adjusting your teaching on the fly, and for the plethora of other things you have done. Although things may not have been exactly as you have wanted them to be, or up to your high standards while teaching virtually or in the classroom, you did all of these things for your students. Your passion to ensure that our students continue to learn, thrive, and doing your best to keep their emotional well-being in mind should be praised. Thank you for doing all of this, on top of, for many of you assisting your own families during this transition. To the pair professionals, maintenance staff, and coaches, thank you. Thank you for adjusting how you did your jobs and responsibilities. Even though some of the restrictions and procedures made your jobs different, you completed them to the best of your ability while keeping the students of this district supported and active. To the building office staff and administrators, thank you. Your support of the students and staff was unmatched. You were understanding, compassionate, and did your best to make things as normal as possible. Thank you for the support you gave to our students' households as well. To the administrative team, the rest of the MPS staff, and school board, thank you. Thank you for the work you put in on coming up with the return to school plan, the providing the three options for our students and their households, and for making difficult decisions with nothing, nothing but the interest of our students' safety, education, and emotional well-being in mind. I would also like to thank the students and households. From what I witnessed, for the most part, everyone worked hard to adapt to this situation. Now, did I agree with every decision and procedure that was put in place? No. Do I believe that they were made in the best interest of the entire district with the information that was in hand at the time? Yes. Do I believe that the educational experience was normal for the students? No. Do I believe that teachers, pair professionals, building administrators, and coaches did their best to make it the best it could be? Yes. We can always look back and say we should have or could have. Assessment of our activities should always be, should always happen, but productively. I just hope we never have to be at this point again. If we are, I am confident that the entire district will do what it's best for the students. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and once again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johoski. We appreciate your comments. Next, we have Ms. Carla Spears.
Good evening, Ms. Spears. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. This is a statement from Jennifer Vanette, who is sorry she couldn't be here tonight. You would think that having a PhD in U.S. history with an emphasis on human rights would make me an expert in critical race theory, based on what we are hearing in the news and even here in public comments last month. But I'm not. I never had formal training in it because it's a legal theory that law students learn in upper-level law courses, if at all. Not all do. So the fervor over CRT is both disingenuous and disturbing. They know that CRT isn't taught in K-12 schools. What is happening across the country is an organized effort to equate all teaching about the hard parts of U.S. history with an obscure theory that people can't easily explain because it would take a grad seminar to do so. I mean, at least last month, the commenters said the quiet part out loud. The real goal is to end the diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. People who denounce DEI as divisive may not understand that the message they are sending is that they believe we should not teach the fullness of history, that we should racialize history. It should be just white. The comments we heard here last month indicate a general misunderstanding about what inclusion means. Inclusion is about a sense of belonging for all people. If you repeatedly ignore both the good and difficult parts of African-American history, then that is not inclusion. To be inclusive, we have to be willing to examine the world from perspectives not our own. What we heard last month were people who expect everyone to conform to the perspective that makes them the most comfortable. No one has ever said that white students need to feel guilty about the past, so it's fascinating that we keep hearing that concern. So let's be clear. White people today are not responsible for slavery, Jim Crow, redlining, housing covenants, or all the other discriminatory acts perpetrated in the past. But all of those things have lingering legacies that still inform the present. Current city demographics reflect the use of housing covenants barring black people from owning and renting homes here in much of the 20th century. Demographics also reflect how it wasn't until the late 20th century that black people could secure professional jobs with Dow. And in the early years, the company wouldn't even hire black laborers for full-time work. There are social legacies, social legacies too. Just in the last six or so years, we still have students getting called out to explain something for their entire race. We have youth making cracking whip noises at black students after watching films about slavery with no intervention. The past is still present, and not talking about it is something that MPS has mastered for decades. It's clearly not helping. We have ample evidence. We are responsible for interrupting those legacies and reimagining a more equitable future. Despite what some commenters have suggested, individual kindness is not enough to fix our nation's and our community's systemic problems. COVID has been particularly elucidative in this because we have failed the social test of putting others' needs before our individual wants. But that also points to how much working collectively to make change is important. Perhaps just like COVID was never an individual battle, please get vaccinated, dismantling racism, sexism, homophobia, xenophobia, and religious bigotry takes a deeper examination of how it is embedded in our world so that we can reimagine a better future. Talking about past transgressions and their legacies is not critical race theory. It is the telling of the fullness of our history. It is only divisive to those who don't who don't want to be responsible for doing the work of today to make things better for our children and generations to come. It's not enough to say we don't want racism. We have to put effort into stopping it. We all struggle to understand others' experiences that are so unlike our own. How wonderful it is that an inclusive education has the power to move us into new spaces with empathy. To fear that is to recognize that you are privileged, and a world that changes may not privilege you in the same ways. Change is hard, but I am tired of living in a community so ruled by fear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spears. Next, we have Elizabeth Hetrick. Did I say that right? Thank you. Thank you for joining us, Elizabeth.
This is my first school board meeting, and I may not be as prepared as some of the other people here. I speak from the heart. I've been hearing a lot from people attending these meetings about parents being uncomfortable with discussing race and inequity. And I'm here to ask Midland Public Schools to adopt an anti-racist curriculum and to support teachers that want to talk about the lasting inequities in our society. I moved here with my children, who are MPS students, about five years ago. We moved here to help care for my grandfather, Dr. William Barnett, who's been living here for about 28, 29 years. He's a retired dean from Saginaw Valley State University. He was having some health problems related to breaking his spine, but these were not the usual problems of old age. These were problems that stemmed from his work as a civil rights activist trained by Dr. King. When my grandfather went to a demonstration in Mississippi, from Detroit, drove down with his friends, he was arrested by three police officers. They tried to separate his black friend Arnold Parks from him and take him into the woods to lynch him. My grandfather said, whatever you were going to do to him, you're going to do to me. So they did. They took him to a cell. They hanged him up by the neck. They beat him. They punched him. They whipped him. They broke his jaw, his shoulders, his fingers, his ribs, his collarbone, his toes, his skull. And when, after three days, he couldn't cry out anymore, they raped him and disemboweled him. I hear people saying that there is not a lasting legacy of racism, that we don't need to discuss the impact it has on our community. It still affects members of our community. I asked my children a few days ago what their first memory was of moving here to Midland. They don't remember the moving in process. They're young. They remember about six months later, when we had joined a church and settled in and made friends with a family, with children about the same age as them, and they finally had somebody to play with. They went outside with sidewalk chalk, and they were drawing pictures of rainbows and sunshine and butterflies, like little kids do on the sidewalk. Not one, but two separate cars of probably Midland Public School teenagers drove by about 10 minutes apart, and they shouted at my children and the other children who were biracial playing with them. My children's first memory of Midland is somebody saying, go home niggers and go home nigger lovers. We can do better.
Thank you, Ms. Hetrick. Next is, we have Amanda Andrus. Thank you for joining us, Ms. Andrus.
I too, this is my first school board meeting, somewhat ashamed to say that, as I should be more involved in my children's education. Both of my children have attended both private and public schools in the past. And I know that most of you are either parents yourselves or concerned citizens that want what's best for our kids. And I want to say thank you to all the educators, all the support staff, and the board for all the work that you do, and again, acknowledging how, you know, tremendously challenging the past couple of years have been. And I believe that we can all work together to get to reasonable solutions where we can provide what's best for our kids. So thank you. There's just a couple points that I wanted to to make in this in this first meeting. And I kind of regret, again, this being my first meeting, I regret not being more prepared also myself in that, you know, I do look, I shop around on the Midland Public School website, and I try to find information. And it's a little bit clunky to find all the things that I need. And I see that as we go through some of these topics on your agenda, I'm sure I'll become more educated. But I would like to know more about the curriculum that's being taught to our children. I would like to be able to, it would be nice to go into a room and have all the textbooks, maybe this exists and I'm just ignorant, you know, to see all the textbooks that our children are using, to understand what the curriculum, what the syllabus is for each each class that children are taking, and to be able to educate myself because I'm sure as many of you can also attest to, you know, the last thing your kid wants to talk about when they come home, you ask them, what did you learn today? And they tell you a few things. They don't want to talk about it, right? So this is from the the highest performing kids to the to kids that struggle. So it's the same. So parents wanting to know more about what their children are learning in school is a good thing. And this goes back to what I think everybody can agree to is full transparency. It's very important for parents and teachers as well. So having a curriculum available that that parents can see readily, review, and understand, and then having, of course, teachers stick to that approved curriculum, I think is something that's very important. And I myself want to start taking the time that I should as a parent to understand more of what's of what's going on in the classroom. You know, the the main roles of government, as we know, one is to protect people, and it's become, public education is a critical role now of government. So with that, you know, it's something that I think that we all need to have very transparent and available to 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 parents to be able to to investigate that information. Something came up recently, I think, with just some recent discussion here about the cameras in the classroom to allow children to, that may be quarantined, to be able to, you know, view teachings in the classroom. I think that's that's a really good, positive step forward because I know that that's been a lot of, you know, what I have heard from kids is that they miss a lot of school during quarantine periods or when they're sick. That's great to always have. My question is, you know, cameras in the classroom, why isn't that something that don't already exist, right? Why can't parents be able to, you know, view what's happening in the classroom? Clearly, there's no expectation of privacy in any public space these days. We have, there's no expectation of privacy in daycares, in law enforcement, in any pretty much public space at this time. Parents really have a right to know what's being taught to their children, and there's really no reason I can see against this. There could be some. I'm sure some people might have some some reasons, but they're, to me, I'm not sure. The cost seems minimal. Security is something that could definitely be implemented, and storage of that sort of information is readily available with today's technology. information is readily available with today's technology. Quickly, on the return-to-school protocol, I was really happy to see that there's a very pragmatic approach being taken to that, some common sense things, you know, with that. One thing to consider is that, you know, positive cases don't mean that there's a severe incidence of disease in the community, so that's one thing to consider. Also, vaccination, some parents concerned about, you know, differences or scrutiny against children that may or may not be vaccinated, and vaccination is a personal and private choice. There's, I still question, if I went into my doctor's office and said, "I'd like a chickenpox vaccination," they wouldn't give it to me because I have a severe history of, as a child, of being exposed. So many in our community have been exposed to COVID, and again, that is something that is a personal choice. One thing I would like to also mention is masks, right? So there's some recent evidence that, you know, there's some detrimental effect from prolonged mask use, and this is in medical journals such as JAMA. But also, I wanted to just briefly say that there's unintended consequences of mask use with it being so har- I have a master's degree in experimental psychology, so I'm familiar with the literature. Looking at faces is very important for learning, so I'll just leave it at that since I'm up with time, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrus. We appreciate it. Okay, next is Brian Cleely. I got that right the first time? Welcome, sir. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Good evening. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me a few minutes of your time tonight. My name is Brian Cleely. I'm a business agent for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 692. I represent close to 500 members in northeast Michigan, many who live here in Midland County. I myself was born here in 1979 at Midland Hospital. I attended Seber Elementary School, Jefferson Middle School, and I was a graduate of Dow High in 1997. I've always been proud to call Midland home. I'm here tonight to briefly speak about Item 6.1, Bid Package 21-208, the Dow High School Multi-Use Field Turf Facility. It is to my understanding that this administration recommends awarding this project to Master Electric. As a taxpayer in the city of Midland, I applaud this administration's recommendation. Master is already doing work throughout the school system, upgrading lighting systems, wearing new electric signs in front of a few schools, and performing some low-voltage data work as well. Many of the electricians that are employed by Master Electric live here in this community. They have been educated by this school system, and they raise their children here. By hiring local contractors to perform local work on our school projects, these employees put tax dollars right back into the community, spending it where they earn it. So on behalf of those community members that are employed by Master Electric that are represented by IBW 692, we thank you for using local labor. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cleely. Okay, Lisa Hanson. Welcome back. Thank you for joining us.
First of all, I just want to say how grateful I am to be here, how much I really, truly appreciate this forum for all of us to speak, because I was listening to something earlier today from the school, and they talked about lifelong learners. And that's what we're doing, sharing ideas and thoughts and where we stand. We're a community, and together, we're learning and we're growing, and it's been an unusual time, and it's been difficult and trying on everybody. And so I just want to, I just want you to know how much I appreciate this. And welcome to the board, and I also want to say I'm really happy that I was here to see that you guys swear to uphold the Constitution, so that was great to see that. But I'm sure you'll be disappointed I'm not going to speak. I'm going to read a story. It kind of sets the foundation for what my dad wants to share, so you can just sit back and breathe and enjoy the story. Okay. I don't, I'm not sure who this gentleman is, but it's circulated around. But 20 years ago in Nashville, Tennessee, during the first week of January 1996, more than 4,000 baseball coaches descended upon the Opera Land Hotel for the 52nd Annual ABCA's Convention. While I waited in line to register with the hotel staff, I heard other more veteran coaches rumbling about the lineup of speakers scheduled to present during the weekend. One name kept resurfacing, always with the same sentiment. John Scalinos is here. John Scalinos is here? Oh, man, he's worth every penny of my airfare. Who is John Scalinos, I wondered? No matter, I was just happy to be there. In 1996, Coach Scalinos was 78 years old and five years retired from a college coaching career that began in 1948. He shuffled to the stage to an impressive standing ovation, wearing dark polyester pants, a light blue shirt, and a string around his neck which home plate hung, a full-size, stark-white home plate. Seriously, I wondered, who is this guy? After speaking for 25 minutes, not once mentioning the prop hanging around his neck, Coach Scalinos appeared to notice the snickering among some of the coaches. Even those who knew Coach Scalinos had to wonder exactly where he was going with this, or if he'd simply forgotten about the home plate since he'd gotten on stage. Then finally, he said, "You're probably all wondering why I'm wearing home plate around my neck." His voice growing, I can't even pronounce this word. Anyway, I'm going to keep going. Irresizable, I think it is, so I'll look that up later. I laughed among the others, acknowledging the possibility. "I may be old, but I'm not crazy," he said. "The reason I stand before you today is to share with you, baseball people, what I've learned in my life, what I've learned about home plate in 78 years." Several hands went up when Scalinos asked how many Little League coaches were in the room. Do you know how wide, how wide home plate is in Little League? After a pause, someone offered, "17 inches." More of a question than an answer? "17 inches?" "That's right," he said. "How about in Babe Ruth's day? Any Babe Ruth coaches in the house?" After a long pause. "17 inches," a guess from another reluctant coach. "That's right," said Scalinos. "Now, how many high school coaches do we have in the room?" Hundreds of hands shot up as the pattern began to appear. "How wide is home plate in high school baseball?" "17 inches," they said, sounding more confident. "You're right," Scalinos barked. "And you, college coaches? How wide is home plate?" "17 inches," they said in unison. I'm going to skip forward. Okay, so I think you get the point, right? "17 inches," he confirmed, his voice bellowing off the walls. "And what do they do with a big league pitcher who can't throw the ball over 17 inches?" There was a pause. Then he said to him, "Pocatello," he hollered, drawing raucous laughter. "What they don't do is this. They don't say, 'Oh, that's okay, Jimmy. If you can't hit a 17-inch target, we'll make it 18 inches or 19 inches. We'll make it 20 inches, so you have a better chance of hitting. If you can't hit that, let us know. We can make it wider, say 25 inches.'" "Coaches, what do we do when your best player shows up late to practice? Or when our team rules forbid facial hair and a guy shows up unshaven? What if he gets caught drinking? Do we hold him accountable, or do we change the rules to fit him? Do we widen home plate?" The chuckles gradually faded, for thousands of coaches grew quiet, fog lifting as the coaches' message began to unfold. I got to skip forward. He said, "We don't teach accountability to our kids, and there's no consequence for failing to meet standards. We just widen the plate. The quality of our education can go downhill fast, and teachers can be stripped of the tools they need to be successful in educating and disciplining our young people. Are we just going to continue to widen the plate?" I'm going to get a skip to the end. This is longer than I thought it was, sorry. Basically, the point is, I'm old enough to remember a time when kids didn't just get a medal for showing up and participating. They had to perform, and our society is not moving in a merit-based way in some directions, and so the point is that we all have to work hard for what we have. And sometimes, if you fail, you got to give back up, pull yourself up by your bootstraps. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. And that brings us to John Kowicki. Thank you, sir, and welcome back.
Hey, nice to be there. Yeah, I love that kid. I'm going to comment on that. I love, when I heard that story, I said, "I love that story," because what I've observed in our society, almost in every industry, they're changing the size of the plate to accommodate what's going on out there. And in my opinion, that makes for a weaker society. And I've got somebody here in the room that knows what I'm talking about, because his dad could throw heat when I was playing Little League ball, and in 1964, he was drafted by the Cardinals because he could throw the ball across the plate. And I'm not going to mention names, Jeff. His dad was a spectacular ball player. Didn't try to change the size of the plate for him. You got to learn to throw the ball across the plate. And so because of some of the other speakers ahead of us, I see Jeff's over here smiling, I'm going to change my direction. What a great world we live in where people can come up and say what they want to say. So I'm going to go right to this, because I like history, but I like real history. I like the History Channel, real documentary, real footage. So I brought this picture, since we just had the 77th anniversary of D-Day, I brought this picture. These are all young men, and this guy in the middle, he doesn't look over 15 years old. Now, what I want to ask you is, do you think before they got in that landing craft to hit the beaches, they were sent to a CRT seminar? How about a, what's the other one? The DEI lecture? Do you think they cared about the color of the skin of the man next to them? I'm going to take a wild guess and say no. I'm going to say their main thought was, "Will I be alive tonight?" And I brought this picture. In 2015, I had the privilege to be in Normandy, and I spent a couple hours going, my wife happened to snap this picture of me, and I went from headstone to headstone. And apparently, I just watched a documentary yesterday, because I wanted to get a little more information, and the commentator said, "If they don't do this, the course of the war can change." And as I looked at this picture, I said, "How many people were never born in the world because these men died?" I said, "Had my dad, had the war, had they not done this, my dad may not have made it through the war. He doesn't make it through the war, I'm not born." That means that young woman that was just up here wasn't born. That means my granddaughter's not born. My son wasn't born. How many people weren't born because these men died so we could get up here and have a discussion about how we want to proceed? We've got, our history is good, bad, and ugly. We've got it all. What do we do from here on? What do we do from here on? And so I go back to my beginnings. I had, I came from Midland. I've got 70 years invested in Midland, Michigan, and four years in the military. My first interaction was a person of another race when I was 18. See, I went like, I'm actually working on this. Like him, Ibrincandi, he went to school to play ball. That was me. I was not a good student. He was not a good student. And because of the teachers in Midland High School and Midland Intermediate School, they kept me eligible, and they worked with me, and they talked to you like you're a human being. The teachers were fabulous in Midland. Midland is a special place, and I'd like to see it remain that way. I lost my train of thought there. Now go, pass through that, pass through that. Here's what my dad told me. I've got enough time to get this in. "Easy to compare yourself to people that have more than you do, but if you do a fair comparison to people that have less, you're going to be really glad you are where you are. If you have people that love you, food to eat, a place to live, and the ability to work, you don't even have to have a job, and you have the ability to work, you're a pretty lucky person." And I've taken that with me all these years, and tonight, I'm going to go to the boulevard, and I'm going to have a beer, and I'm going to celebrate everybody that's got more than I do.
Thank you, sir. Judy Kowicki. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Why would we think that?
Well, today, I watched the July 2020 DEI workshop, and I have to give you all credit for giving so much time to the changes that you're working to make for the community. We think a lot about the school system with our granddaughter being involved, but we also think a lot about it because we've had the opportunity for the exposure here with you. So at 5:41 on July 13th, God woke me up, and He told me to get up and grab a pen and pencil because He had finally given me what He wanted me to share with you tonight, and here it is. "I realize that you are tasked with reading and retaining all that is put before you by state and federal sources. It must allow you little, if any, time to research other points of view, so you're stuck with ours. In a way, you are indoctrinated by all this information. This five minutes that we are allowed is our chance to drip into your minds and hearts a different perspective. So take a breath, if you can, and focus, please, on the words of all of these people tonight. Two that mentioned they hadn't taken much time to prepare seemed very prepared to me, and I appreciate every word that you shared. Let us all be a beacon of hope and not a shadow of the past. Critical possibility thinkers are needed in this world. Solution-oriented, problem-solving, not problem-focused people. Being able to look back and see what we did wrong, make changes and make things better is what this is all about. I recently saw the definition of equal versus equity, and it is this, from Dr. Jim Richards. They might sound the same, but they are very, very different. Equality is when we all have the same opportunity, and equity is when we all have the same outcome. It's not likely that we're going to get the same outcome for everyone because God made us all different, but if we can focus on our likenesses and not our differences, we will all be better in the end. Learn about each other's stories, and then the sacrifice that was made to create a change, and focus on that for improvement. The mind will move us in a direction of what it thinks about the most. These gifts that God has given us will create progress. I've got bold, audacious dreams because I know I've been made for this, but it doesn't mean a thing if I don't back it up with action. I believe that every single person here tonight was called to be here for a reason, if for nothing more than to tell other people about how much our community cares. So don't just listen, please, but hear the voices, the cry of the parents who dare to share their concerns and their hearts with you. No smoke blowing allowed. None of us are here because we want any division. I believe in DEI. I believe in diversity. I believe in equality, and I believe in inclusion. And I am so grateful to hear that you are not going to be separating vaccinated and unvaccinated, just as an example, but if we can stay away from labels and remind these kids how much we care about them and their futures, they will be better for it. A question I will ask you in a short closing is this. Of the teachers that you remember, do you remember what they taught you or how they made you feel? We all have a chance to value, encourage, and get to know each of these kids and make them better adults as they grow older. Thank you, really thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Kowicki. We appreciate your comments. Okay, the last written request I have is Kurt Yaki. Is he joining us tonight? Okay, anybody else in the room care to address the board? Yes, sir. Can you tell us your name?
John Mulvaney.
Okay. Welcome, John. Thank you.
Hello, my name's John Mulvaney. I teach at Midland High School. I teach history and current events. You can see the target on my back if I turn this way, maybe. I'm also a parent of two students, one graduate, one currently a senior. Wasn't sure if I was going to talk today, so this is a little bit more off-the-cuff than usual. I usually like to write things down, so I don't say anything stupid, but I just wanted to say that critical race theory as a curriculum, it's not taught in Midland High School and Midland Public Schools by social studies or any other discipline. We do discuss the good, the bad, and the ugly of our history in the United States, our nation's ideals through the Constitution and other documents. Our nation's ideals through the Constitution and other documents do illuminate a shining city upon a hill, but sometimes those lights can be pretty dim. One of the main strengths of our nation I teach my students is how we continuously persevere as a nation to make an ever more equitable, equitable union. This is why I think it's necessary for teachers to facilitate dialogue about diversity, equity, and inclusion in our classrooms as reflected in our history and in current events. I don't teach CRT. I do teach our history. And just two other quick comments I wanted to make. Um, as I've taught over 20 years in the classroom, and I believe this is probably true K through 12, not every student that enters my classroom starts from the same starting point. They don't start from the same starting point. Some may be farther than 17 inches from that finish line, some may be closer. And one other thing regarding history and what, what actually is happening in history, I don't have a picture of the landing craft at D-Day, but I bet if you look closer within that landing craft, there are no black men in that landing craft because of the racist policies of the US government at that time. It's not for a lack of bravery, it's for a lack of their country not wanting them to fight alongside their white countrymen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulvaney. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Wendy Burden.
Hi, Wendy. Thank you for joining us.
I was definitely not prepared because I didn't think I was going to speak, but, um, I find it, uh, necessary to do so just because of the different opinions I've heard in here, and some of, you are all so gracious. Um, I would say that I haven't always been that gracious with, uh, with those that I disagree with, and, uh, but I do appreciate all of those opinions. And, uh, a lot was talked about, uh, on race and focusing on problems or focusing on solution, and where you can go from there, and what's, what can lead, or what can come from which one you focus on. And history is, is extremely important. We need to know the true history of our country, which was founded on, um, one nation under God, which we seem to have lost. And the other part, uh, was on race, and my, I guess there's, I, I think that most of us, um, want what's best for our children, we want what's best for our community, we want what's best for everyone. Um, I feel like this is a very loving environment. Um, people here, they care about one another, it seems, and, and I care about all of you as well. I don't know most of you, um, but I do care very much about you and your children, and I don't have any children here. I was raised in, in Midland and went to the El, Eastlon Elementary. I came here for middle school, and I went to Midland High, and, um, and I, I really have grown to love this, this city, which is why my husband and I are still here. And so it's, it's given us a lot of opportunities, but I also have a business here, and I work with people with chronic pain and chronic illnesses. And the one thing that we've learned through many trials and errors, myself included, having chronic illnesses, is that we don't focus on the problems that we have, where some other, um, health institutions may focus on that. We're not looking for Band-Aids, we're looking for real solutions. And so, do I work with people of different races? I don't know. I just work with human beings. Um, I, I work with anybody who needs it, and nobody had to teach me that. Um, and I'm not focused on what happened in, I learned from what happened in the past during the wars, and I appreciate the people who sacrificed their lives to get us to where we are today, in a free country, which my goal is to help people understand the value of that and to not, uh, give it away. Um, but we focused on the root cause of the problems that people have, uh, in their health, and then we focused on the solutions and the options that they have to heal. The biggest thing that we, I have to teach people is that your health is your choice. And if you have, if you take personal responsibility for the health that you have or you don't have, then you can make changes that will give you health and the freedom that you're looking for, so that you can live a vibrant and healthy life. And if we don't take those responsibilities personally, and we expect a doctor to do the work for us, then we will fail every time. So what I would love to see is that the schools are focusing on the solutions, learning from the problems, focusing on those solutions and the root causes of those problems, and then what are the options that we can as individuals take and put into action as students, as, as teachers, as school board, as, um, as concerned citizens? What can we do as individuals about taking personal responsibility to make our community better? It's not about making the community better without focusing on the individuals, because you can't do that. You must have individual responsibility for each and every person before that you'll, you'll have a community that is thriving. Midland has been a thriving community. I see it declining myself. I see a lot of things that are declining in, in a negative way, and have personally bought property outside of Midland because of what I'm seeing, but I'm not gonna leave and just, you know, jump ship. Uh, I'm here to also be a community of this, where my first home is, um, but I'd like to see, uh, other people stepping up and speaking. This room should honestly be filled with hundreds of concerned citizens, not just people who have children in school and that sort of thing, cause I don't. My children are grown, and I'm a grandma, and they don't even live in this area. So, so I'm hoping that every one of you will go out and invite other people to come into the school board meetings and other meetings that are going on around the community, and step up, and as terrified as you might be, because public speaking is the number one fear over death, um, I would still encourage you to step up and say something, because your voice matters, and if we can't hear your voice, it doesn't matter. So be a part of the community by taking individual responsibility and, and telling your feelings to those around you, who we've elected to be our leading officials or governing bodies. So it's time to step up and, and take back our country, county by county. Thank you.
Anybody else? No one? Okay. All right. We are going to close the request to address the board, and we're gonna move on to item 5.1 under Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. This is information only, textbook adoption. Penny.
Good evening. I do have for your information, a textbook that's being presented for the 28-day examination period. Uh, this book or books will be available here in the curriculum office if anyone wishes to come, uh, review them in person. This book will be used for the middle school Mandarin course. You might remember that we're expanding the Mandarin program into our middle schools. The title is Go Far with Chinese. The publisher is Cheng and Sui, and it is copyrighted 2020. And this followed our typical, uh, recommendation process to bring this to you tonight, so there was teacher and administrator input.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have under Finance, Facilities, and Operations, item 6.1. This is an action item regarding big bid package 21-208. Mr. Bruton.
Thank you, President McFarlane, for the opportunity to bring to you bid package 21-208. Bids were solicited for the final phase of the HH Dow High School multi-use field turf facility for the installation of lighting and scoreboard at that facility. Um, after review of the bids, administration recommends awarding the project to Master Electric of Glabber, Michigan, for a total price of $666,900. Uh, this project will continue to use donated funds, but may also be supplemented, supplemented, excuse me, by capital projects funds if the fundraising efforts do fall short.
Thank you. And at this time, uh, because it is an action item, I will accept the motion regarding item 6.1.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by John Hatfield, support by John Lauterbach. Any discussion regarding item 6.1?
I just have, uh,
Mr. Lauterbach?
Question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the question, what's the timeline for getting it started?
Early fall, John, um, so tonight you'll take action, and it'll start probably, you know, like right around school year.
Okay.
Yep. They'll brace right up against weather again, like we did the turf.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a question, a process question for Brian, Handor, and Mike. The two lowest base bids were within 2.3% of each other. Then there was a, one of the higher base bids that had three voluntary alternates that, that were subtractions, that brought their bid price significantly below the lowest base bid. What was the, I assume there was a process whereby Barton Mallow examined these bids and the different characteristics of each, but what was that process and how was the decision made, or the recommendation arrived at?
So that's, the contractor suggesting a change to the specs, and Barton Mallow will refer back to the architect and engineer in this case, and, um, if that, if I recall on that one, um, none of the contractor bids was something the engineer suggested that we take. So there are, there are, there are other, um, contractors who made changes after the bids were opened, that were not included in their bid, that did go back for review to the engineer, and one of them is one that they suggest we take, and I think it's switch from copper wire to aluminum wire, the holder, or some piece of that, and so we expect that, um, that will be enacted and save the money and potentially get the price below what they raised, cause they were, they were a little bit short with this price. Um, so when doing so, the low bidder is still a little bitter, even with doing that, and his change is still lower than the, than the other competitors on that change.
Okay. So I just, if you just look at the numbers, you know, the numbers tell one story, so then the, then Barton Mallow goes back to the architect and the engineer-
Correct. That's a volunteer alternate from the contractors themselves.
To look at subjective components of various bids and determine what their recommendation is based on additional information.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That helps.
I have one correction for you, Brian. You said that's the final phase. How about the final phase for 2021?
Yes, sir.
Cause I think we have some more things we wanna do out there.
Yeah. I noticed you said that too. I, I guess it'd be final phase for the turf part of it, and then if they get to the other stuff, we'll see where it goes, right?
That was the intended language.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, next up, item 6.2, another action item. We have gifts totaling $110,009.99. Mr. Bruton.
Thank you. Um, both of these gifts do require our action this evening because of the amount of them. The first gift is from the Phyllis N. Pancrits Music Education Fund, and also the Larry C. Smith Memorial Scholarship Fund, a donation of $5,500 for music scholarships, and the second is a donation totaling $104,509.99. Now, this comes from the Midland Area Community Foundation, but it is worthy of note that $100,000 of that, um, came from the Strohsacker Foundation and flowed through the Midland Area Community Foundation to help assist with the HH Dow High turf project, and the remainder of the funds came from miscellaneous donations, and we would appreciate your action to accept those gifts.
Can we act collectively on these, or do we have to do each one?
Yes, collectively is fine.
Okay. Okay. I will accept the motion regarding item 6.2.
Uh, so moved.
Support.
Motion by John Lauterbach, support by John Hatfield. Any discussion regarding 6.2? Okay. Thank you very much to all of the donors to help make this project happen and the music scholarships as well. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, next up, uh, Mr. Bruton, we have an information item, 6.3.
Thank you. And for information this evening, we would like to extend our gratitude on behalf of staff in the Board of Education to the Phyllis N. Pancrits Music Education Fund for another donation, this time $500 for voice lessons, Fine Arts Voice Camp, and also for vocal music competition expenses.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, next, we have Human Resources, 7.1. Mr. Jaster.
Thank you. The Board of Education and MPS staff extend their deepest sympathy to the family of Mr. Terry McBride. Mr. McBride passed away April 30th, 2021. Terry was a teacher at multiple buildings. He retired in 2006 with 38 years of service.
All right. Uh, next up, we have item 8.1. This is correspondence to and from the board. That is, um, listed out in the agenda. Uh, 9.1 lists our remaining board scheduled meetings, um, and going into, uh, and through June 20th of 2022. Next up is the study discussion session, and at this point, um, obviously, Pam Singer has, has left us and has moved, um, which is why Mr. Frazee was appointed to fill her seat, and we haven't had a chance to really acknowledge Pam yet, and so, so we're gonna take a minute, and we're gonna do that. Pam unfortunately was not able to be with us tonight. Um, she is going to watch this video, uh, once, once it is broadcast. So I have a declaration here, um, regarding Pam, and I, I just wanna say that it has been really an absolute pleasure working with Pam over the last, what, Lynn, eight years?
I believe so.
Yeah. She has been just a tireless advocate for our kids, putting herself, uh, second to everything school-related. She has always, always stepped up to volunteer, to sub on committees, um, and to just give selflessly to this district and to this community, and, and we're blessed that she is going to continue, um, in her professional capacity, working in the community, although sadly we're going to lose her physically here. So, um, with that said, I, I'm gonna read this, and it starts off as, whereas Ms. Pamela Singer has served on the Midland Public Schools Board of Education from October 13th, October 2013 through June of 2021. Whereas during her tenure on the Midland Public Schools Board of Education, Ms. Singer has served as board president for two years, vice president for three years, treasurer for one year, and trustee for two years. Whereas throughout the years of service, Ms. Singer has made an invaluable contribution to education in Midland, always focusing on the best interest of all students, and that statement could not be more true. Ms. Singer has selflessly served on numerous boards and committees during her tenure with the Midland Public Schools Board of Education. Her initiative and tenacious service to this public school district has been especially noteworthy, insightful, and very, very much appreciated. Therefore, be it resolved, the Midland Public Schools Board of Education formally recognizes Ms. Pamela Singer for her eight years of dedication to all the children of Midland Public Schools through her passionate, committed service on the Midland Public Schools Board of Education, dated this 19th day of July, 2021. Pam, thank you so much when you see this. We appreciate it. And before I turn the floor over to Mike for his closing comments, are there any points of clarification that we need to discuss on topics that came up tonight? Okay. Mike, floor is yours.
Um, as I wrote to you, I, um, turned up at the meeting with our representatives. Um, we've been concerned all the way through with the budget, um, not being a bad state school aid budget in any way, but being, it's a good one with equitable. Once they moved the, the student foundation allowance, though, I think, uh, we kept trying to make a point that some of us, the, of the hold harmless districts were in an unusual position, that where we, we may become the lower funded district. Not by a large dollar amount, but we, we are, and so Brian's done some math, and unless there's an explanation from Lansing that we're wrong, um, it appears us not being able to get a full FTE amount for our at-risk students, because we're a hold harmless district, now puts us at a lower funding than our colleagues right in our own county. And so, as you know, the current budget will give them the same dollar amount per student that we have, and that's the first time since Proposal A was passed in 94, I believe it was 94, 95, um, to happen. Well, through year, through the years, we have chosen and we're given the opportunity when Proposal A to put in is continue to tax ourselves at what's called a hold harmless millage. And that revenue comes in, it goes to Lansing, and then at one time, all of it came back to you. Over time, only part of it comes back to you, and the amount of funding we receive for hold harmless versus the amount of funding we would receive if we had 100% of, uh, per student, at-risk student, which we have 35% today, and I need to give you a little history on that, is since I've been here, I've been advocating for that. Three or four years ago, Jerry Wasserman and I were successful lobbying, uh, then House Rep. Glenn to go to Lansing and be on, advocate on our behalf, and we got into the at-risk funding at 30% on a dollar. Now they moved, in this budget, it moves from 30 to 35, which we appreciate, but we would- only 30-some hold harmless districts in the state. And if you're at the lower end, which we are, you know, Birmingham gets 12,000 per student, we get $8,700 per student. We got caught in that one bubble area, and we may be the only district in the state. I'm not aware of for sure. There may be a couple others that are in that same situation. And so, if we can point that out, most of the advocates in Lansing believes that needs to be fixed in some capacity. And so, we'll see if we can advocate that going forward on that. So, that's been on our table to get that set up. Centers down themselves, called back and said, hey, would you like to come testify in Lansing? I said, sure, I'd love to do that. So, I've done it before. Sometimes they listen, sometimes they don't. But so, they are listening to us, and we'll see where that goes on that funding. So, that's a concern. And I think we knew, I knew there was something there, but until we put figures to it and I went through, I'm not sure we knew we were, we're probably, it appears we are right on that. And so, we'll see what we can do on that piece of it. 29 days after today is construction before we start our first day of school. It's a race. In some ways, this summer's been a harder one to manage than the large years because we did many small projects in many buildings. And so, it's kind of interesting to make sure we're going to get where we need to be. And of course, COVID, for some reason, has delayed equipment on everything. And so, I think we're in good shape, where we'll be fully functional for first day of students. As you know, when we say fully functional, we're stofed and continuing the projects and wrapping them up on B shift or at night afterwards. One concern is some HVAC equipment arriving very late for Midland High, but it appears that the contractor and Barton Mallow have met, and that means second shift to get that in time up and running. We'll have HVAC, the state will approve us. It just may not be as cool as they'd like it in the first few days. And it's only a portion of the building that's getting that equipment. So, it's going to be a race on that HVAC equipment at Midland High, so I forewarn you on that. I have been watching Jefferson a little bit. If you know, that new lot's taken a lot of time, and so, I'm a little concerned about the repaving of the old lots. And there's a little bit of reconfiguration there in that old lot, if you recall the pictures as well. So, maybe a little concern still at Jefferson. They haven't brought that to me, but maybe that's more on my behalf as well. So, construction's ongoing, going fast. We're starting a new podcast. It'll be released on Thursday. Mr. Bruton is the narrator, orator, questioner, and Penny and Jeff were the only two stars today. I'm not sure. They recorded their first session today, and we will review it tomorrow to make sure we didn't have any major flubs. And it was over the return to school plan, and returning to school has fallen what it may or may not look like. And I think we've already got the second one ready to go, and it is.
A focus on athletics and student activities with the athletic directors.
So, another piece to our communication, you know, since I arrived here a little over eight years ago, hard to believe, nine years ago now, you know, we added the communicate in the beginning, and we continue to grow our communications. And MPS Connect has been a great tool, almost overwhelming. Many of them spoke tonight, also email me pretty regularly. So, I get, you know, a couple hundred of those a week that we answer within 24 hours to parents on MPS Connect. And then, the podcast, we hope to be more proactive, providing the information, maybe so there's less questions on some of those things as we go forward. So, Brian is better spoken than I am, so I delegate at the authority for Brian to be our voice, and he'll have many, many guests on there, including myself at times, to prepare and provide that to the community. So, we'll see how that goes. And that's all I have tonight, very short.
Okay. Once again, Patrick, John, thank you both, and congratulations in your new positions.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your stepping up and wanting to help us out.
Absolutely.
Everybody, thank you for coming out tonight. It was great to hear from those of you who spoke, and for everybody else, we appreciate you being here. I will now accept the motion to adjourn.
Next coming meeting, are we, I forgot in that schedule, in that timeline, is DeAndre returning as an update, or is that group coming to give us an update that we hired?
Periodically, but there hasn't been a lot in there.
I anticipate it will be at least another month before we have an update for you. We're just in the midst of building out the surveys and collecting some of that preliminary data for their review.
Periodically, they'll send a written one. I sent you a very short first one. Do you remember that, maybe a month ago when they were first starting? And I'll forward that anytime we get the written one.
Yeah, we should have one this week that you can send out.
So, that'll keep you up to date a little bit, too. I thought you were going to talk about where we're going to meet next month, too. Up in the air, so we were hoping to be back over next door. It'll be a very close timeline. I actually think we're probably going to be here because it's going to take too much to move them back. The building may be available, but we'll be in the process of moving ourselves back over there. So, maybe one more meeting here. Kind of a little awkward, but we'll get through it.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by John, any support? Support by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will we stand adjourned?